Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phone. I advise these proceedings will be recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the city clerk and give it at the council chamber and present to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time. And if you have a handicap or something, there's also the speaker up there so you guys can speak to, just have somebody give the request to speak to the city clerk. So I'm going to go ahead and have this meeting called to order on Tuesday, December 10, 2024, 6:00 p.m. The invocation will be given by Pastor Mike Leno from Azure Hills Church. Is Pastor Mike here? Okay, so Pastor Mark Matthews, is he here?
Yes.
Yes. See, I told you we needed you here anyway, so just in case. Okay, and then after Pastor Mark gives the invocation, the mayor pro tem with the pleasure of leaving, so everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Father, it is a great event this evening as we swear in three council members, and we're so grateful for the election and the peaceful transfer of power and the hard work that these candidates did and were rewarded by the votes of the citizens of this great city. I pray for the mayor and the rest of the council members that this now is a new way forward and plans are in the works for things regarding the city, and we just pray that your will will be done in all of them. We thank you for their love for the city and the desire to serve it the way they do. I ask that you would protect them now over the next two and four years, that you will bless them with the presence of your Holy Spirit and comfort them in times of heartache and be with them in times of joy. And Lord, we're thankful for all the other members of the city that work so hard, some behind the scenes and some right out front. So grateful for them and what they do. It is a blessing to be a part of this great city, and we thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me, the pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Mark. Madam City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Sabino.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So I'm going to be moving some stuff around in this, but we're going to go to item A, election results presented by Deborah Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. For the record, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is the declaration of results for the November 5, 2024 general municipal election, and the recommendation is that we would adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, reciting the fact of the consolidated municipal election held on November 5, 2024, accepting the official canvas and official statement, votes cast from the San Bernardino County Register Recorder County Clerk and declaring the results thereof. On November 5 of 2024 this year, the city of Grand Terrace held its general municipal election, and the canvas came back and the official certified election results came back from the registrar voters on December 3 of 2024. The following election results and votes cast are as follows. Jeff Allen received 2,297 votes. Matt Brown, 3,024 votes. Michelle Sabino, 2,376 votes. The other two members that ran, those were smaller percentages. However, those are the official results, and Councilmember Allen and Sabino and Brown are official, are elected officials. Measure M unfortunately did fail. Yes votes were 2,533 and no votes were 2,728. So at this time, the city council is asked to adopt the attached resolution with the official election results. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does the council have any questions? Does council have any statements? Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay, so one statement I'll have, you know, congratulations to the councils and the members who made it. Measure M, it was brought in by the citizens. Nobody on the council had any influence on that. The citizens put in applications. We didn't pick the citizens. So I thank the citizens oversight committee who did all that hard work to try to get that measure passed because, you know, it was to bring up the sales tax. And I know this state, we get taxed a lot, but this is for your community. It was, we were at 7.75. Now it'll bring up to 8.75, same as outlining cities. People see tax and they vote no, but this was for, you know, the way it was written and stuff, it was going to have, you know, safeguards in there to cover our law enforcement. So Lieutenant Frye is going to apologize that it didn't pass. We're still going to take care of the men and women here, but, you know, it didn't lose by that much. But since I'm the mayor and the leader, I will take responsibility for it because we needed more public outreach and more committees on it to help people understand. So I don't know what the citizens want to do in the future or what the council wants to do in the future, but, you know, we will continue to protect our men and women who are protecting us, and the city will still make the city safe. We're not going to give any scare tactics saying because it didn't pass, you won't have sheriffs. That is not the intention. Our attention is still to make this the best community ever and protect our men and women and protect every resident here, no matter what they voted for or not voted for. So that's your own personal, you know, you have your right for it. A lot of people died for, you guys have that voting right, but like I said, I'm the leader of the city, so it's my fault, and we will continue to go on it and move forward. So with that being said, there's no public comment, there's no other thing, so I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Allen. Second by Councilmember Sabino, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we're going to do a little bit changing here because when we do this presentation and stuff, everybody wants to take pictures and talk, and I do have people that want to go home, so it'll end up being 20, 30 minutes. So we're going to move item B and C for later. And so item D is going to be reordering additions and remove agendas, and I want to remove agenda item I, selection of mayor pro tem and appointments, because we have a council member Brown who's not here, and I want to make sure we give every council member a fair chance to talk and state their, what policies they want to be on, and I want the full body to pick their mayor pro tem. So that's up to the fore. So do we have to do a motion on this, remove an item I?
No, we can just bring those back if there's consensus.
So we'll bring that back on the next council meeting. And so item E, is there any public comment at all on anything?
Yes, sir. Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank Councilmember Henderson for his service and all the things he's done for our community. City Clerk Thomas, for all the work that she's done. She was very patient with this rookie when he would come up here. So I do want to thank her and wish them all the best in retirement, and the fight for M is not over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, and they both came from Apple Valley and are both retiring at the same time. I don't know what's going on here. Did you guys have this planned? Do we have another public comment?
Yes, sir. Yes. Or we have two. We have Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. I too would like to thank Ken Henderson for his time, long time, being on our council, representing the city as a city manager and all the positions that you've held. I know you care about the community, and thank you very much. Congratulations, Jeff. Congratulations, Michelle. Congratulations, Matt. I know that he was already installed. So pass that. Please let me put up lost and found pet signs in Grand Terrace without taking them down, without fining this. Let's figure out a way to make that happen. Week and a half ago, a woman lost her little dog over in Vista Grande Way, and one of the city council, no, excuse me, one of the city staff continued to take down her signs. She made bulletins or banners for her cars to park in her driveway for her lost pet, and she was told by staff that she couldn't do that. She couldn't have her car parked in her driveway with a banner on it saying her dog was lost. That's a bit much. Take down the signs that say pools, junk hauling, all that kind of stuff, but please give us the opportunity to find our pets. This is a big deal for the community. Today, there was a dog found. Not everyone's on the internet. Fortunately, I recognize a lot of the animals that get posted in town as lost or found, but not everybody uses the internet. The only thing we have else to do is signs. Some of it's old school. People drive around looking for signs. Figure out a way to make it happen. Let us date them. I date mine, and on the third day when I go to take them down, they're already gone. I know that city manager has said that he's being cooperative, he's not taking them down as quick, but there are people on staff to take them down like immediately after they're put up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Bobby, can you send me an email on your recommendations, what you would like to see so I could bring it to the council?
You bet, sir.
All right. Thank you. Who else on the public comment?
Cindy Bidney. I'm going to read for Cynthia. She's not feeling well and couldn't come. I'll try to read it fast. There's a lot of words. She found a dog in town. Good evening, members of the city council. First, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our new council members and bid farewell to those who are leaving. Thank you for your dedication and service to our community. I'm here tonight to share a personal story about compassion, responsibility, and the importance of ensuring the safety of our pets and the animals we share our lives with. On the 24th of November, around 5:00 p.m., my son and I were driving near Duberry and Michigan Street when we spotted a young, beautiful husky wandering close to the road. My heart stopped as I saw him just moments away from being hit by a car. I knew we couldn't just drive past. I have a special place in my heart for huskies, and I share my life with my sweet Alaskan husky, a smaller cousin of the husky. She's a rescue, and over the years, she's brought endless joy to my family. She's proof that rescue animals have so much love and potential when given a chance. So when I saw that husky in the road, I couldn't ignore him. My son and I stopped the car, approached him carefully, and coaxed him to safety. He was frightened and unsure, but he was willing to let us help him. With the assistance of my friend Bobby, who lent us a crate, we brought him home for the night. That evening, he settled into the crate and slept quietly. The next morning, I called City Hall and was advised to take him to Riverside or San Bernardino Animal Shelter from staff at City Hall. That's my words and adding to it. Unfortunately, San Bernardino City Shelter refused him, said that they don't contract with the city of Grand Terrace. That is not true. And so she took him to Riverside where his owner would probably never find him. Here's where the problem arises. Many people in our area don't think to check the Riverside Shelter when they've lost a pet. The staff at the shelter even mentioned this to me and asked me to bring it to your attention at City Hall. This gap creates a real obstacle to reuniting families with their beloved pets. I urge the council to consider expanding resources for animal welfare. This could include missing and found signs to be posted and collaborate between shelters and neighboring areas to make the process of finding lost and found pets more efficient. Thank you for your time and for everything you to do, or everything you do for our four-legged and two-legged friends. And if I may ask for my, or say something else for myself, Deborah Thomas, I will miss you. Good luck to you. Thank you.
So is there any more public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on to item F on the consent calendar. So the following consent counter items are to be routine and non-controversial. Be acted upon the city council at any one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the items. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, so item three on the consent calendar, we're removing that as a part of the removal from the other thing? Or is that local appointments list?
I'm sorry. Where's the consent? Oh, no, the local appointments is the maniac. It's a standard list that we place that shows who's on our committees, our park and rec, historical and cultural, and such, so that that's just a resolution, just outlining who's currently on there and, of course, the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you. So no public comment? Does the council have any questions on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson and second by Mayor Pro Tem, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
So I'm going to move J and K around. City manager, you have any communications? None? I can read lips. I saw it. Okay, so I'm going to give the council members a chance to speak right now who are getting sworn in so we don't move back and forth. So I'm going to go with Councilwoman Michelle Sabino. Would you like to address the public on your oath and have any other public comments for the council?
I would like to first start with Ken. Thank you for your service and all that you have done and your tutelage during my time coming on. You've been incredibly supportive. Your service not only to this city but to this county has definitely had great impact. I appreciate not only just the work that you've done, but your skill set and your knowledge, and Matt has some big shoes to fill coming forward. So thank you for that, sir. Deborah, I, again, thank you for all that you have done and for your support, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. Ooh, sorry, emotion. To my family who has stood by me and sacrificed so much for me to be able to do what I do and to be with me through it and to stand with me with it, thank you. And to the community of Grand Terrace, I just want to thank you for your trust and for your support throughout this election season, not only just serving in this community but the surrounding area that impacts us as well as the legislative body in Sacramento that also impacts local governance. Thank you for trusting me, for your faith in putting me through to lead. The community is first and foremost. My desire that I've said since day one is I want the opportunity that this dais and those who have come before me, I want the opportunity that they've had to raise their children here. I want those same things. I want the safety, and I want to maintain the character of our community. I believe it's important that if we're going to develop and build, that it has to be responsible and that it has to be sustainable, and it has to be in a way that doesn't impact our way of living here because we are very different than our surrounding cities. And so I thank you for trusting me with that. I look forward to serving all of you. Many of you already know how to reach me, how to find me, so please, that does not end tonight, once I take my oath again. And so thank you again to everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Well, Ken, I got to tell you, in all the years I've known you, I've always said this. I have learned so much from you relating to city government, and, you know, I just can't imagine that what we would have lacked here had you not been a part of our team, and I'm so glad that you were. You know, at every, at every level, I mean, even back in, what was it, 2012, I think, when you were the city manager? And then, you know, city council, I mean, you've just been a real asset and really, really appreciated. I'm so glad to know you, my friend, so glad. And the first person to keep me straight, and more times than not, and answer the questions and make sure that I'm following the rules is the city clerk and Madam City Clerk. Like I told them, like I told you last week and everyone else, you know, when we went through a series of city managers, we were always reassured knowing that you were there and you had our backs and you had the city's back, you know? And regardless of, you know, what was going on, I certainly appreciate all that I've learned from you, and I will, you know, I'll miss you, but I wish you all the best, and I know that there are, you have helped Daisy immensely, and she's going to be an excellent city clerk replacement for us. And to all the people who have come here tonight, thank you for coming here for this swearing and ceremony, and I appreciate all the support that you gave, give the city and continue to give the city and have in the past. Many of you are volunteers for various entities in the city. I can't thank you enough for your time and the work that you do for the city on your own dime and on your own time. Were it not for you volunteers, our city wouldn't function as smoothly and as well as it does. So I thank you for all that you do, the committee members and the commission members and that are here. Thank you for that. So the next four years for me, if you will, I hope you don't get tired of me coming around because I'm going to be, the only thing I'm going to be preaching about is this new library and community center. I'm so excited about it. I want us to have this new library. Our city deserves this library and community center, and it's a beautiful, beautiful facility. If you've seen it on paper, and if you haven't, ask me, I've got pictures of it. And so I'm going to be really promoting this. So over the next few years, I know that some people think that it's going to take 100 years to get it done, but I think we can do it. In the next four years, we can break ground, and if we really put our heads to it and if we really work hard, we can have a nice, beautiful new community center in our city and library up on the hill. And so that's what I'm going to be really focused on, along with all the other duties and responsibilities that we have. And so I hope you'll join me in that effort because I know that once we have it, you're going to be able, you're going to love it, you'll use it, and you'll appreciate it. It'll be for everyone. And so that's what I'm looking forward to in the next four years. But thank you again for being here and your support, and I ask you to continue to support your city.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Well, Ken, you don't get anything on this. We got a whole column for you, buddy, so. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the service that we have in this city and those that are outgoing. I know that you will take fond memories with you, and then, of course, you will also go on with your lives, and that's terrific. It's been a great experience to know you, and I greatly appreciate the input that has been here. I still believe that the local government is our last bastion for freedom, and it takes each and every one of us to be mindful of that. And I thank you, the, our first responders, for all the services they provide for us and that we can count on them. We also have city staff that have been trained, especially in emergency management situations, and those are some of the unsung heroes because if you looked over the last three or four weeks, you see a lot of the fruit that's been happening. I appreciate Michelle and Jeff and Matt Brown sticking to their guns and being elected, and we will draw upon them and hopefully their wisdom and their experience and move forward. And so far as the library is concerned, I tell you, it was a little bit of a road to get that property, but we got it, and I know there is a little old lady that donated it that is really interesting to see what the drawings look like. So I've already put a call into her, and I'm sure she'll be glad to sit down and go through those things. So Merry Christmas to all, and thank you very much. You live in a great place.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So comment, you know, we will miss you, Deborah. I know you'll miss me messing up your last name sometimes. I won't call you Thompson again, so that's the last time I call you, but we will miss you. You've been a blessing to this city. I think half my office hours were sitting in there talking to you about everything under the sun. But, you know, enjoy our conversation, I enjoy our fellowship, and, you know, I just wish you and your family the best on your retirement, and just enjoy yourself. And, you know, if you ever want to come back to Grand Terrace, you could talk to Bobby. She'll get you a house and you can move here, and one day you can run for council or something. But we will miss you and just, you know, God bless you and your family. And I'll say my closing remarks for Ken because I got an article too for that, but I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Sabino and Councilmember Jeff Allen on your campaign. You know, it's, you think the city's small until you walk everything, right? Especially there's a lot of hills, right? And, you know, and thank you, Pastor Mark, for opening up your church for them to have a campaign forum, and everybody who's involved. I also want to thank Shad for putting his name in the hat because a lot of people want to be on the sidelines and say what they want to do, but when you put your name in the hat and run for the council, or you volunteer to do stuff for your city, that's when it works. Anybody could stay in the background to complain about something, but when you actually put forth, your foot forward and do something about it, that's what makes Grand Terrace grand, doing that. So congratulations, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I have two years left. I don't, you know, and I have a reelection bid, but, you know, like Jeff said, you know, there's, it'd be nice to have that, you know, library and community center, and, but, you know, that's, that's going to have to be something else that comes on to us, and we are, we, we have a really good senator now, an assembly person, is a senator in the back? Oh, and there's someone, congratulations on your election. So we, Assemblymember, so, you know, it's, it's a blessing to have somebody that's going to represent our city and not just be, okay, that's Grand Terrace, they're on their own. No, that's what makes for networking. That's when we go up to Sacramento, and it's nice because I felt like we had, you know, we were stepchildren for a couple of years. But congratulations, I know God's going to do good, good things for you, and, you know, we're always here for you, all right? And, you know, and thank you for everybody, the staff and all the volunteers who made our tree lighting ceremony a big success. And, and thank you for Cars and Coffee who made the parade for, you know, getting toys for needy kids, the fifth year now, and everybody who volunteered for that. And before I go, I want to read this thing. This will give you guys some advice on the Bible. Isaiah 40, 31, "For those who trust in the Lord will find new strength. They will soar high on the wings like eagles. They will run and not grow weary. They will walk and not faint." So my advice is just give your trust to the Lord and keep moving forward and ask for strength and wisdom. All right? And so with that, I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody and God bless, and we'll go ahead and move to our next one. So what we'll do, we're going to do Councilmember Henderson, I'll do a closing remarks, and we'll hold off for pictures, and then Councilmember Allen and Councilwoman Sabino, they'll take their oath of office, and then I'll adjourn so that way people can have time to take pictures, all right? Because I don't want to rush anybody, and there's a lot of people they want to thank and have pictures with, okay? But before I do that, item K, city manager communications now. I know I threw off a, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do, thank you. I just wanted to announce that City Hall will be closed for the holidays from Saturday, December 21, and will be reopening Monday, January 6, and we wish you and your family a wonderful holiday. I also wanted to see if Lieutenant Frye, if you have anything to report?
Nothing today, no.
Thank you. And Assistant Fire Chief Jaeger, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing to report, just a simple congratulations to you two. I look forward to working with you and to Councilmember Henderson. It's been a pleasure, sir. I appreciate you. It's been great working with you, and of course, Deborah, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Yes, Merry Christmas to everybody, and I wish you all a Happy New Year's.
Chief, there was a fire on Locketina. It looked like a brush fire. I just saw it today going to church was, what was the cause? Do you know anything, or was just a car threw something out, or did Colton take care of it?
No, Colton took care of it. It wasn't, it was in light flashy fuels, and I don't know. It wasn't, it was in light flashy fuels and I don't know the exact cause of it, but we are under red flag warning through Wednesday and we do have pre-positioned strike teams in the area that we were awarded by the state through OES. So we have them until I believe Thursday morning.
So we also have people on standby so if the seniors apartments lose power, if we had to evacuate them?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Of course.
Lieutenant Fries, we're good on the sheriffs too with any emergency preparedness if something happens?
Yes, as far as on the sheriff's side, yeah, we're working with county fire and just in the event of three evacuations, things like that, we've been training with them. So we're on board with that, so nothing at this time, knock on wood, but if there were something were to come up, we're ready for that.
Well, thank you gentlemen for having your officers and, you know, everybody there for our two local events, we really appreciate it. So it was a blessing to have you guys help the community out, so thank you. So Item B, special presentation, Deborah Thomas, the City Clerk to read a submitted to the public, read a letter submitted from the public and you want to read something?
I do. Joseph Brady is a colleague of Ken Henderson's and he had asked me to read a letter on his behalf as he was unable to attend this evening. So for those listening to this letter, I have known Mr. Ken Henderson for nearly 30 years. I met him when he became Director of Economic Development for the town of Apple Valley. Regrettably, we did not start our relationship in a very positive manner. Candidly, the town manager and one of the council members had to facilitate a lunch one day for Ken and me as our level of communication was not only deplorable, but it was less than professional. I have to say that I was the one being less than professional and Mr. Henderson was extremely professional in how he handled my intensiveness on an issue dealing with regional economic development. Through that, Ken became my friend and I learned to admire his tenacity, his trust, his drive, his ingenuity, his intelligence, and most importantly, his loyalty to whatever governmental entity he was working with. When Ken left the town of Apple Valley, I believe that Apple Valley suffered a serious loss. There is only one Ken Henderson and there will only be one Ken Henderson. While we have kept in touch and while he has moved on and done some great things for the city of Grand Terrace, we had an excellent lunch this year in Grand Terrace that I will never forget. It was one where we were very candid and honest with each other and talked about our dreams, our aspirations and whatever time we have left on this earth. Ken, I am really proud of you that you decided to spend time with your great wife and family and to turn your legacy over to the balance of the city council and the city leadership within Grand Terrace to complete your council's mission. I am proud to call you a friend and even more proud of the great relationship, excuse me, the great leadership you have brought to the many places you have worked, including the Antelope Valley, cities within San Bernardino County, and most importantly, your last major employer, the town of Apple Valley and now finishing off in the city of Grand Terrace. My wife Debbie and I congratulate you and look forward to a congratulatory dinner in early 2025. Congratulations, my friend, very truly yours, Joseph W. Brady, The Bradco Companies.
Thank you for reading that, Deborah. Appreciate it.
Any other letters, Deborah?
No, but I do also want to say congratulations on your retirement. You will be tremendously missed.
Okay, so we're going to do a couple of presentations and then we'll stand up and take a picture with Ken, then we'll come back and sit and then we'll do the oath and then we'll let, you know, we'll let you come back once we do our pictures to say something or you can say something before we do our pictures as the council, then they'll open up for you to be out there in the public too, they want to take pictures. But this presentation, you know, Ken, I think, I don't know, do we ever have another council member on here twice? Broken?
And not that I know of.
So you're like the president, 45 and 47, is that what's going on? So we moved your, your picture's moving twice, you know that, right? Okay, so I think, Deborah, did you write this or did Ken write this? Okay, I figure there's a little bias going on. Presented to Kenneth J. Henderson, Councilmember, for your exemplary career, service and outstanding leadership commitment and dedication shown to Grand Terrace City Council, partnering boards, committees and the community of City of Grand Terrace. This time around, January 24, 2023 till December 10, 2024, providing community with an excellent quality of life presented by the Grand Terrace City Council. So I'll hand that to you when we get up ready to stand, but I know, Councilwoman Sabino, you have something for him you want to give to? Now she saved her allowance for that, Ken.
I'm just going to ask you to go ahead and open it. It's not, your wife will, go ahead. Yeah, yeah. So Mr. Henderson is not fond of having his photo taken, will not pose for them and during, no, please. During our last meeting, he very graciously said his goodbyes and he said, this is my last meeting serving on council. And as he did so, I'm like, no one's taking pictures and I don't know if it's okay and I picked up my phone and I began to take photographs because it was just one of those moments that I thought you might want to remember or that your wife would want to have in the house. And so thank you again. I know that you are not fond of photos, but that was just one of those moments that I thought you should have of your last moment here on the dais. So thank you again, sir.
Thank you, Michelle. Much appreciated. Camera shy that I am, anyone who knows me knows that I kind of run away from cameras for the most part, but thank you again.
Runs away from cameras but not talking. All right, Ken. Well, Ken, me personally, you know, thank you for coming up and stepping up to the plate and helping, you know, when I just got elected a mayor, you know, because we look for strong people to help us, you know, as we go through and we had a vacancy. But part of my, the biggest thing I always liked was Ken was my road dog when we go places. I'd take that little Prius places and, you know, I had, you know, Councilmember Allen and Mayor Protem with me too and then they stopped driving with me, I guess because I don't drive right, I don't know. But when we were at Monterey training and then I had a half a tank and I always tell my sons, make sure you don't go blow a half a tank, put fuel in your car. You never know what's going to happen. Well, guess what? They closed the highway on us and took us off a beaten path called Highway 198. So Highway 198, it's a beautiful highway until you're on a half a tank of fuel. And it said next service is 65 miles. Well, we had 75 miles to go. Well, oh, we'll be all right, but I didn't realize there was hills. And then coasting down, I think I took my foot off, I don't know, but we, the time we got to that highway and I told Ken, Ken, if we're stuck out here, we got to shovel and stuff, I don't know what else to do and I don't think anybody answered the door and hopefully it doesn't get dark. But we made it into that gas station, what, five miles to go? Yeah. And we ran in there and, you know, and we were praying the whole way driving, you know, there's a lot of old gods, but we made it and I knew we'd make it all the time, but, you know, but, you know, so Ken, Highway 198 for you, buddy. And it's officially dedicated, Ken Henderson, Councilmember, you know, your highway. So it will always be your highway, I want you to put this up there and if you ever get bored and I go to Monterey again, you know, I'll have you with me, all right? So Ken, we're going to, like I said, I really appreciate all your hard work and everything you've done for us and you get to make closing statements again like you did last time, so the floor is yours, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of you know that there's three minutes for public comments and the mayor has finally called my seat on the council, the 20-minute seat, and I'm sure you can guess why.
Tomorrow, Costa.
You know, I don't want this to sound like Academy Award speech where everyone is thanked, but I have to start off by thanking my wife and life partner, Cecilia, who has been loving and supportive of my public sector career for as long as we've known one another. It's a bittersweet moment for me because of public sector employment and electing and appointed office has been my calling, but at this point in time in my life, after almost 43 years of public service, my wife, in a similar way, has served for 37 years in the public sector. So both of us are retired now and we want to do some things that we haven't done in the past. I was talking to one of the staff members and I believe I've passed 1,000 city council meetings in the course of my career. So those of you who are in the public sector can understand that your life revolves around the city council agenda every two weeks. I can see Director Hutter and Director Clayton nodding in agreement and so it'll be a good thing for us to not have to worry about city council agendas. I can't thank my colleagues on the city council enough. The last two years that I've served, it's been a wonderful experience, it's been fulfilling. We've accomplished a tremendous amount on behalf of the city and I'm very excited about the reelection of Councilmember Allen and the election of Councilmember Sabino and Councilmember Brown. I'm excited about the potential for this group and, you know, you have to work hard to realize the potential and I'm certainly hopeful that we will benefit from their efforts as time moves on. In addition to the city council, I would be remiss without mentioning Conrad Bolowitz, the city manager and the city staff that have been so instrumental in moving this community forward over the last several years. Staff is hardworking, professional, and I'm very happy that I was a part of the rewarding staff for fair compensation in the current labor market and reflecting on the goals and the accomplishment of the goals that the city council has established for the community. In addition to the city staff and the city manager, I would be remiss without mentioning our city attorney. My first time on the council back in 2017, the council had a competition for the selection of the city attorney and Mr. Guerra and his staff did an outstanding presentation. We were, they were selected and from that time forward have served the city as an effective and efficient and hardworking city attorney, something that's always needed for municipal governance. So in closing, I want to say two things and end where I started. I want to thank the city council with best wishes and want to thank again, the love of my life, my wife, Cecilia, who's been a tremendous bulwark for my role and function in the public sector and the 40 years that we've lived here in Grand Terrace and the service that I've strived to give the community over a period of time. You can tell my voice is quavering for a good reason and I appreciate all of you and the support that you've given me and given the council and I wish the council and the community the very best going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Ken, we'd like to have you step up one more time and take a picture of your awards here and then we'll move on to the other items. So if we could go ahead and have the council step up there with Councilmember Henderson, soon to be Mr. Henderson? Grand Terrace, did a lecture and we'll go ahead and do your oath of office.
The best advisor that I've ever had in my political career, my life, my wife.
All right. I'm glad you're here. Ready?
I am.
I?
I.
State your name.
Jeffrey Allen.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sabino, you're going to be, your mother's going to give you Julie? Gassano. We should have just had everybody sit on that side of the room.
I?
State your name.
I'm Michelle Sabino.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
State your name.
I'm Michelle Sabino.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
To the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take?
This obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge these duties upon which I am about to enter?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we'll have plenty of time for pictures. But yeah, Michelle, you should have just had everybody sit on that side. Closed session, we have none. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this thing. We're going to have City Hall still opens for, you know, you guys can give your congratulations and your fond farewells. But our next regular meeting will be January 14, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests, item, have a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. And once again, Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year, and congratulations on my colleagues. Meeting adjourned. [applause]